Give me one, like, two minutes to get my, my screens back the way they belong.
Let me know when you're ready.
I'm ready, Mayor Garcia, whenever you're ready.
Council ready? I'll call the regular city council meeting for February first, twenty twenty-two to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. Meeting announcement. This is to A B three six one. This meeting will be held entirely virtually. All methods available for public participation are detailed on the first page of the agenda. So call please.
Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Vice Mayor Abadamas. Councilmember Joseph. Councilmember Orio. And Councilmember Washington.
Here.
Okay. We will now report on closed session confirmation. Report will action. Mr. Ross.
Mayor and council, members of the public. Your council convened an open session at five thirty-three P M to address the matters agendized for closed session. After ascertaining that there were no public comments on those matters, you unanimously decided to add an additional matter to closed session. The evaluation of the city manager pursuant to government code section fifty-four nine two seven B. You concluded the closed session at six twenty-two P M. Except as indicated, I will prepare a written report upon return from closed session, consistent with government code section fifty-four nine seven point one. That would conclude the report unless there are questions.
Any voices from council? Saying none, hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Ross. We'll move on to our agenda. Proclamation is a presentation. This evening gives us great pleasure to recognize February twenty twenty-two as Black History Month. City of American Canyon proclamation. Recognizing February twenty-second as Black History Month, whereas in nineteen fifteen, Dr. Carter Goodwood Woodson, noted black scholar and son of former slaves, founded the Association for the Study of Negro Life and History, which was later renamed the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History, A S A L H M. First, Dr. Woodson initiated Black History Week, February twelfth, nineteen twenty-six. For many years, the second week of February chosen so as to coincide with the birthdays of Frederick Douglass and Abraham Lincoln, was celebrated by African-Americans in the United States. And whereas in nineteen seventy-six, as part of the nation's bicentennial Black History Week was expanded and became established as Black History Month, is now celebrated all over the world. And whereas we pay tribute to the heroes sung and unsung of African-American history, recalling their inner strengths and sustained millions of embalage. We remember the courage that led activists to defy lunch mobs and restore their neighbors to vote. We carry forward the unyielding hope that guided a moment movement as it bent the arc of the moral universe for justice. Even while we seek to dull the scars of slavery and legalized discrimination, we hold fast to the values gained through centuries of trial and suffering. Whereas every American can draw strength from the story of hard-won progress, which not only defines the African-American experience, but also lies in the heart of our nation as a whole. This story affirms that freedom is a gift from God, but it must be secured by his people here on earth. It inspires a new generation of leaders and teaches us all that we come together in a common purpose. We can right the wrongs of history and make our world anew. And whereas Black History Month reminds us to continue to fight for justice and equality and should be uniting a call to our nation to continue to work for a more diverse, supportive, inclusive, and protective young. And now, therefore be it resolved that I, Leon Garcia, Mayor of City of American Canyon, on behalf of the American Canyon City Council, to hereby proclaim February twenty twenty-two as Black History Month and call upon public officials, educators, librarians, and encouraged residents of American Canyon community to observe this month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Thank you.
Is this the time that I can speak now, Mayor?
Thanks.
Okay. First, I'm Brenda Knight with Brenda Knight Events, and I am honored to be here tonight to accept the proclamation on behalf of our African-American community in the City of American Canyon. I am honored also that you are paying tribute to the heroes unsung and sung of African-American history. But it is truly fitting that on this day, February first, for Black History Month, that I'm able to announce the inauguration celebration of Juneteenth in American Canyon will be on Sunday, June nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, at Main Street Park. We will celebrate African-American resilience as we mark the date eighteen sixty-five when enslaved communities in Texas learned that they were free from slavery. But this happened two years after the emancipation proclamation. We will reflect on the past, honor the present, and look to the future. Plans for the day will educate all who attend by providing history moments from various speakers, music, and its meaning featuring gospel, blues, jazz, and R and B. Understanding of our spiritual roots by leaders from various denominations and vendors displaying ethnic items available for purchase. You will also hear from various descendants of past history makers. It will be a day of history, a day of celebration, a day with music and dance. Along with the City of American Canyon, the American Canyon Arts Foundation has accepted to be a partner in this event to make it possible for fundraising. I will be meeting with the city manager to discuss the possibility of the city sponsoring staging, security, porta-potties fencing, and provide direction and guidance in obtaining health permits for food, the possibility of serving beer and wine, flyer distribution, and who to call to reserve E M Ts for the day. This is the preliminary planning of the event. I will also be meeting with Chief Rick Greenberg, whom I've spoken already, to introduce him to the security for the event. Their security will know the African-American community and how to secure the city. I have already gotten confirmations of participants who are eagerly looking to help provide the inaugural Juneteenth celebration of American Canyon to be an unforgettable event. On Saturday, the committee will meet at Main Street Park at nine A M to further discuss plans. I look forward to working with the councilmember Pierre Washington, former councilmember Ken Leary, and community members Nathan Buford and Lanise Span. We will continue to add to our community, to our committee. Again, Mayor Leon Garcia, all city council members, the city manager, thank you for recognizing Black History Month in the City of American Canyon. And I can't wait to see you on Juneteenth to have a wonderful celebration in the City of American Canyon. Thank you and good night.
Thank you, Brenda.
Brenda, before you go, I just want to thank you for facilitating this, but I don't think we heard you. What day is that again? Juneteenth, what day?
Oh, I did not say what Juneteenth. Thank you. Juneteenth is Sunday, June nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. I did skip over it. Thank you.
I just wanted to make sure.
It will be at Main Street Park. Yes.
Hey Brenda, I just have a quick question. I'm sure you're already, you already got this covered. I know it's an outdoor event. Can you tell us about your COVID precautions?
Yes, our security will be planning to check everyone that comes in to make sure that they have the vaccinations. Because I only operate, as you may know, I have a group called Ladies in Red. So we are accustomed to having our vaccinations, our boosters also. And you must wear your mask during the entire time of the event during that day.
Thank you.
Was that it again, Brenda?
Yes.
June nineteenth.
Yes, eating and drinking. Yes.
Jim, thank you very much. We look forward to your involvement in putting it together. You know, you have an outstanding reputation for the events you put together. And I have attended so many of them in the past. I'm looking forward to this one.
Thank you so much.
As I understand it, it is June nineteenth, right?
June nineteenth.
Monday, June nineteenth.
I know.
And Brenda, you've assembled a great planning committee, so I'm excited about that. On behalf of the Arts Foundation, excited to partner. And of course, you can always hit me up for sponsorship.
Thank you so much.
Oh, very good. Thank you. We look forward to that. We'll stay tuned with you on all the activities that come.
And I will occasionally update you on what's happening.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, very good. All right. Well, exciting event in the future. And I'm very proud of the fact that here we are, that we celebrate Juneteenth in American Canyon. That certainly is a mix-up of part of our community, wonderful families, and they contribute great things to the betterment of American Canyon. Okay, we'll move on now to oath of office for Alexandra Iketa. Hey, go through the office will be administered by.
I'll take. Yeah. Here I am. Okay. Ally, please raise your right hand.
There you go.
Just fill, excuse me, just a moment. My oath of office, here we go. Okay. If you could raise your right hand, please, and repeat after me. I, and state your name and title.
I, Alexandra Iketa, Parks and Recreation Director.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And to the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental.
Reservation.
Reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Happy with us. I just look forward, all the things that are going to be happening. So I seem to be a creative and energetic person. We're going to hear good things. The floor is yours. Any comments you'd like to make as well?
For me, I'm sorry. I'm saying, I'm really nervous. Can't tell. Thank you. I just want to say thank you to everybody here, the American Canyon team and the community. I'm super excited to join this team. And in this short period of time, I, you know, seven days in, and I just truly love it. And I love my team, and I love this community, and I just want to be able to contribute and support wherever I can. So to everybody out there who's watching, please, we're here to help and support you and to serve you, and I'm super excited to join this team. So thank you so much for choosing me.
Oh, good. Again, welcome aboard. Good to have you with us.
You're also lucky because you're leading the team that is the most favored by our constituents, so. I hope we do get to have all the fun. I won't sit there and say that I did choose the right department if I'm going to be in city government, so.
You'll have a lot of, a lot of contact with people in American Canyon. Yes. All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Move on now to public comments. Have you seen any public comment on any items not on the agenda?
Mayor Garcia, we have received several public comments regarding feral cats, which have been forwarded out. Some of them were entered in on, in this item, on items not on the agenda, and others were included on the later finance item with ARPA funding. So if you like, I could read all of the names, and then the comments are on the website as well.
Very good.
Okay. We received comments from Andre Gardiner, Clarence Mamorow, Rose Maldonado, Sharon Rucker, and Tammy Wong.
Thank you. We'll certainly look over those comments and take whatever feels appropriate.
We do have, we do have a couple hands raised.
Okay.
I have Justin Hamilton Hole. Go ahead, Justin.
Well, good evening. See, Kelsey.
Good job.
Kim are our peers. I wanted to shout Pierre Washington, and I want to make call for him to have a little bit phone call today, this night to talk to him at what point on the city. And then, so I was try out Brenda Black. She doing a good job. Yeah, I think I see her one time in person before. So again, thank you, Pierre Washington.
You're welcome, Justin.
Thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
Okay. I have Joy Hilton. Go ahead, Joy.
Hi, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Alexandria. Really excited to have you. I'm here today to represent the American Canyon Community and Parks Foundation. Today is February first, and it is our first day of our Heart Your Parks month-long event. This is a month-long celebration that's really just to help the community feel good, encourage environmental awareness, to showcase our amazing parks, and promote our local artists. So this year, we have twenty-eight oversized hearts and seventeen giant heart frames painted by local artists. We're talking ages kindergarten is our youngest, and then all the way to senior citizens. They are wonderful. They are displayed at twenty-one parks, trails, and locations all throughout American Canyon. We have artists actually from American Canyon and Napa and Vallejo this year, so it's really exciting. We're starting to expand. And we have our first kickoff event this Saturday at Shenandoah Park. So it's February fifth from ten A M to noon. And it's just a celebration for everyone to come out, see one of the art displays, which is at Shenandoah Park, and then paint your very own mini heart that you can take home or you can hide around the community for other community members to find. So it's really just a day to get out and have some live music, enjoy hopefully the sunny air, hopefully it's not too foggy, and just get out and have some fun and be with the community. If you would like to find out information, to print the maps or other event information, just visit our website at A C parks dot org. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. We look forward to that. As I said, I'm sure we all have certainly the collection there at the community park, too. Corner of Benin and also, plenty of work. So thank you for putting that together.
Thank you, Joy.
Any other speakers?
I have Tammy Wong. Tammy, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
I want to thank you for the Black History proclamation, and I think it's great that there is a Juneteenth celebration being planned. I'm looking forward to it. Thank you. But I wanted to also ask that I know our, our public comment system is new with registering to speak and the e-comment and all of that. And what I found is if you want to leave a written comment using the e-comment link, it only allows you twenty-five hundred characters. So I, maybe I'm too verbose, but that seems to be really short. And I had to actually stick my comment in as an attachment because I had a lot of information I wanted to share with you. So I'm hoping that you will make the comment box bigger because twenty-five hundred characters does not seem to be, you know, large enough. Or if you do want it, do you want to keep it that size, maybe just have information then saying it's okay to add an attachment because I'm not sure how many people will, people will recognize that and maybe just get frustrated. So anyways, that is my comment. I appreciate the new system and look forward to a very interesting meeting tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you.
There are no other hands raised at this time.
Good, very good. Thank. We'll move on to our agenda. Are there any agenda changes, council? Dado, accept the motion for the consent count. A move. A second. Motion by Joseph, second by Washington. Please.
Okay, Mrs. Washington. Okay. Councilmember Joseph?
Yes.
Councilmember Orio?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Abadamas?
Yes.
And Mayor Garcia.
Yes. Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Move on now to our agenda, public hearings. Item eight, acquisition of certain properties for public purposes.
Mr. Mayor, council, the matter before you is a proposed resolution of necessity, which is necessary for acquiring a third parcel from what's collectively known as the Newell Ownership, which is necessary for the construction of portions of the Watson Ranch Backbone Improvement Project. This specifically is for the northern extension of the intersection of Newell Drive. It is the third action based on a proposed appraisal, which was furnished to all the involved property owners on December tenth, twenty twenty-one. On January seventh, you took action with respect to acquisition of portions of the vine trail and temporary construction easements on other portions of the Newell Ownership. This is the third component of that action. The appraisal was in the aggregate in the amount of a hundred and seven thousand dollars. The reason for the delay was the necessity for meets and bounds legal description, which is attached as number, attachment number two to the staff report. All the same factors and procedures that were applicable on January seventh are applicable here. There is an existing eminent domain complaint based on your actions on January seventh. Should you proceed to adopt this resolution of necessity, the complaint would be amended to reflect this action. Again, the findings are the same. They are necessary for immediate implementation of the backbone infrastructure of the Watson Ranch specific plan. If there are questions concerning matters set forth in the acts report, let me know. I'll answer them. Otherwise, this is a notice of public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Any questions this time from council? Saying none, we will proceed with public hearing. We have anybody from, for the public hearing? I'm sorry.
There are no hands raised.
Okay. Have we seen any written communication?
I have not received written comments regarding this item.
Okay. It is time that I will close the public hearing. We'll return to councils for further discussion, desired action. Any questions or comments from council?
If there's no questions or comments, I'll make a motion and a short comment beforehand. You know, I'm hoping that the parties involved in this can get to a resolution quickly. This is not a step that we would normally want to take, but it's necessary for a project that we've been discussing for fifteen years, and it's a place that will make American Canyon better, and I think both parties involved in this whole thing, and actually make them profitable as well. So with that said, I am going to make a motion to adopt resolution number twenty-two. Next in order, a resolution of the city council of the City of American Canyon finding and determining that public interest, convenience, and necessity require the acquisition of certain property for public purposes.
And I would second it and echo Councilmember Orio's remarks. Hopefully, we don't have to go too far down this legal path.
Mention and second.
Motion second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Joseph?
Yes.
Councilmember Orio?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Abadamas?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes. Thank you, council.
Thank you, council.
Now to our best side of item nine on our agenda, statewide capital improvement needs and American Rescue Plan Act funding discussion.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And it just dawned on me that we have two items tonight. I don't know how much this item will generate in public comment, but I know the item related to climate emergency will be an item of comment. I know we've already covered the agenda changes. I don't know if the council is interested in having the item number ten related to the climate emergency resolution go first or not. It's certainly up to the council. We're prepared to present this item, but it just dawned on me that, I know we've had a number of public commenters on this next item. Oftentimes, we'll move that ahead just out of a.
They have a lot of public comment, Brian.
I have, I have not received any comments on this item.
Yeah, no, I think the request here is to move the declaration of climate emergency up. And I'll go ahead and make that motion. I think if that's the proper thing to do, is to change the agenda to the declaration of climate emergency first, and then we will move on to city capital improvement needs and American Rescue Plan Act funding discussion.
I see where you're going with that, council.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Okay. And Councilmember Joseph?
Yes.
Councilmember Orio?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Abadamas?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes. Item number ten, the climate emergency.
Yes, Mayor. Sorry, let me shift into my packet now. This is an item actually that both councilmembers Joseph and Councilmember Washington have been working on along with a number of stakeholders. Resulted from some interactions that we had and requests from the public to address the issue of climate change and without stealing really any of their thunder, I'll actually turn it over to Councilmember Joseph and Councilmember Washington to kind of summarize maybe what, what your approach has been, and then invite any other comments from the public.
Good. Washington, why go ahead or?
You go ahead first.
Okay. Real quickly, this is like phase one of the effort. We, we've had a small committee of very dedicated individuals that have worked with Councilmember Washington, myself, to kind of brainstorm some ideas, and from there, we kind of narrowed it down to the next step in the process, which is essentially coming back with a resolution, in the process, which is essentially coming back with a resolution declaring a climate emergency, acknowledging that we want to take actions, show leadership and deal with the issues now and not later, and certainly use climate change as as a lens through which we look at a lot of other policies. And with that in mind, the resolution then goes further to kind of direct the ad hoc committee to develop a more thorough package. We've identified a number of areas, transportation, building, renewable power and storage, carbon sequestration, environmental issues. And and of note, the emphasis is on personal actions, what we can do as individuals and as businesses. Because at the end of the day, government just imposes a lot of programs on people. That's, you know, one approach. But if we're really going to make a difference, we better convince everyone that they all have to make certain changes in their lives and move forward in that direction. So the the resolution more or less spells out the mandate and indicates that amongst everything else, we figure out how to pay for all of this, because it's never a good idea to say, okay, we need to do X, Y, and Z. And, you know, it'll just be done for free, apparently. So we'll we'll target revenue sources. And then we've given ourselves a six month timeframe. And I think Councilmember Washington and myself have talked about metrics and project management schedules. It just seemed might be a little peculiar if we didn't impose them on ourselves. So we will have metrics that can define success and we'll have timeframes as well. So that's my summary maybe of the process. I know there's people in the audience and certainly Councilmember Washington who can fill in the gaps.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Joseph. I'm just saying that I just felt that the resolution is is a long time coming. I'm glad it's here. A lot of hard work that's been done. Jim Wilson, Emily Bit, Alicia Carson, Jim, I mean, Chris Benz, to name a few, have been instrumental in not only just educating myself and Mark on on the statistics that are out there that show that this is the way we need to be going. We're not leading in California. That's a Peluluma thing. They get that that bar, but we're leading in Napa County. And we want to try to get this momentum rolling. So I actually want to kind of give it back to like Emily. I believe she's on the call, Emily and Alicia, to kind of like, you know, from their words, just that, you know, they have the facts, they have they have the momentum going forward. So if it were not for them, and educating, you know, a seasoned guy like me, and even seasoneder guy like Mark, you know, you know, it's 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 refreshing. So I just, you know, kind of want to give it back to them if they if they want to kind of like say a few words about the hard work and the things that they've been doing. And they're not stopping here. They're continuing. I've been reading up on them. They're all over the place, advocating and talking about climate change and educating people.
Okay, are we ready to hear from the community?
I have Alyssa Karas.
Okay.
Alyssa muted.
Um.
Hello.
Sorry, can you hear me?
Good evening. Yes, we can. Go ahead, please.
Um, oh, it says join as a panelist. I'll stay as an attendee if that's okay. Um, well, um, I do have a public comment prepared, and it's mainly to really just thank everybody. So it basically, I was just going to excuse myself, but you already know who I am. So I just wanted to say that I'm here today on behalf of my group because we wanted to express our generation's deepest gratitude for your work. You have listened to our public comments and presentations, take our asks seriously, and we can take immediate action. Spent lots of time preparing the climate emergency resolution and the bit on new gas stations. You have done so much and I want to do even more to save our environment, which is why essentially tonight the City of American Canyon is taking a crucial step towards a better, more sustainable future. So I just wanted to thank everybody who has been working really hard on all of this and has and all of you have been really listening to what we've been asking for. You have listened to our facts that we presented. And you really just took everything seriously. So that's kind of just like all I wanted to say. So yes, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for what you've done. You have another speaker?
I have, oh, I do have a hand raised. I have Jim Wilson. Jim, go ahead.
Thank you.
Good evening, welcome.
Good evening. Thank you very much, everybody in this room. You're to be commended for a job well done. It's been such a pleasure working with you so far, wrestling, you know, with some of these issues. There's nothing comfortable about it, but it's thrilling to be able to confront this challenge together with you all. And it takes your kind of courageous action to reverse course. And what you what you also did today with the consent calendar is to take a meaningful commitment to stopping doing further harm by stopping expanding, you know, essentially a dirty energy system, such as, you know, a gasoline delivery system. And and these are the simple steps. They're they're a struggle, but they're they're simple first steps. And I loved hearing Mark talk a minute ago about climate change now being one of the filters through which all of the American Canyon policy decisions going forward are to be considered. That means we're in a true emergency, and that becomes a part of what we do. We have consent counter items in many jurisdictions that go to, you know, the finances of the jurisdiction. Maybe one of the things you might consider doing is the carbon budget aspect of what we do in American Canyon. Finally, it's thrilling to hear Alyssa and Emily, they get it. A lot of their generation gets it. Their entire lives are being shaped by what we do going forward. And and it's been a thrill for me to be able to participate in the ad hoc committee that Mark and Pierre have with the students and other members, along with myself from Napa Climate Now. So thank you very much for booting this into gear. It's been wonderful watching your process. And I love seeing your leadership in the county. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have Tammy Wong.
Very good.
Go ahead, Tammy.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
I just want to point out, I believe I had registered to speak on this topic prior to the start of the meeting. So I don't know if I did it incorrectly, because it I don't know if it went through. I had registered to speak actually on quite on two other items as well. So.
Well, we have you for this one.
Yeah, I have you on the citywide capital improvement needs, but I do not have you registered on, I don't think I have you registered on anything else.
Okay, well, thank you. Maybe I did it incorrectly. But anyways, I want to thank our city leaders for including me on this committee. I found it very, you know, I found it very empowering to work with our elected leaders and others in the county on this important topic. And I hope to see this go through and that we are able to empower our citizens and our neighbors to make changes that we need. Because really, you know, this is the most important topic that faces us, because there is no planet B, as they say. And so I just wanted to again offer my support for this. And I look forward to working with all of you as my elected and as neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. We look forward to working with you as well.
Thanks, Tammy. I have Chris James. Go ahead, Chris.
Hi, can you hear me?
Good evening, welcome.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, this has been a long road, and I really appreciate you all sticking with us. And there's, I think this is just the start of a longer process. I've been impressed with what I've seen from the committee and the thought that's gone into it. And it's much more impressive than I thought it was going to be, to be honest. And I'm thinking it could be used as a model for future things as well, where you are including citizens in decisions and reaching out to broader community members beyond even beyond our city to get input on important matters. So again, thank you for listening to the community and I look forward to this being passed tonight, hopefully. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. I have no other hands raised at this time.
Okay. Yeah, we received any written comment?
I have no written comments on this item. Oh, I have a I have another.
Keep coming.
Sorry, I have two more late entries here. I have Celeste Mirasal. Celeste, go ahead.
Hi, I just wanted to say from Napa Climate Now, thank you for being leaders and setting the example for the other cities within our valley. And thank you for the sacrifices that you've made in order to do this work and the effort that's gone into it. Thank you, all of you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. I have Linda Brown. Go ahead, Linda Brown.
Hi, thanks. I got.
Good evening, welcome.
Good morning. Good evening. I got booted out because that panelist invited to be a panelist message came across earlier that may have booted some other people out. So just just to let you know that in case you need to go back or just anyone else. In any case, I just wanted to put this in perspective of where we are, kind of maybe in a funny way. Tomorrow's Groundhog Day, and traditionally, it's the day when Punta Tawney Phil comes out of the hole, sees his shadow or and declares whether we're going to have an early spring or six more weeks of winter. And I thought that was an interesting timing, because those were the good old days, when we kind of knew what our seasons were. But these days, when the 10 hottest years on record have occurred in the last 11 years, when the trees and the flowers are blossoming way too early, when our summer and fall have become smoke season in light of the raging wildfires, and when each snowfall seems like a miracle in the face of our ever deepening drought, we realize that this is the time to reckon with our climate crisis. And I'm so proud of what's going on in American Canyon and all of you. I want to thank Councilmembers Joseph and Washington in particular, but each and every one of you for everything that you're doing to promote and push for the climate emergency resolution, for the action with respect to the banning of the new and expanded fossil service stations as one tangible action. To Emily Bit and Alyssa Karas for your firm resolve in in speaking for your generation and making us all sit up and listen. And as a final thought, I want to say you all remember that other Groundhog Day. That's the movie that Bill Murray was in. He keeps repeating the same day over and over again. And he keeps making mistakes, and he can't get it right. And he gets totally frustrated. But he ultimately, he perseveres, and he finally succeeds. And the success is to wake up to see another day. And that's the best analogy I can think of. We all have to persevere. It seems hopeless. And yet, it's not. If we stick together and we persevere, we will succeed in this too. So thanks to all of you for standing up for climate.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Okay, I have no other attendee comments.
Okay. See, Councilmember Washington, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a closer remark. I just hope that other cities in California, particularly those cities of Dap County, you know, in our surrounding counties, will follow suit. And if they have existing fossil fuel stations that satisfy the needs of their particular communities, that they too will decide that, you know what, they don't need anymore and and start taking climate change seriously. So maybe we need to get our young people off to those little cities to kind of do some education. So again, thank you, Emily. Thank you, Alyssa.
Councilmember Joseph?
Your hand up? Yes, I would echo Councilmember Washington's remarks. And maybe they should speak to the Board of Supervisors, since there's getting to be a lot of gas stations in the counties bringing up. But the other point I wanted to make is consistent with this idea of getting the job done. We actually have another committee meeting scheduled this Thursday at 5:30. So we're hoping that the council will approve the resolution, and that will give us a mandate to to get to work. And that is scheduled within 48 hours. So looking forward to it all.
Very good. Thank you. Vice Mayor Abadamos?
Mr. Mayor, and thank you, everybody, for your comments and your hard work on this resolution. I just wanted to say in response to Councilmember Washington, I'm not sure if you've heard, but St. Helena recently voted to start working on a climate emergency resolution for February. So it's happening in the county.
Oh, that's good to hear. You know, I just would, I'm very impressed with the work done on this. And I just really appreciate Councilmember Mark Joseph and Councilmember Pierre Washington for representing the city's interest in this. I know you have a broad base of contact with the community to express that going forward. And certainly to engage our younger population, our youth in this whole process, and inherit the world that we leave them. And then they will have their challenges to work on. This is what impresses me about this whole resolution going forward. We didn't get here overnight. It's a very long history of human activity that brings us to that point, and accelerated. If you look at some of the bits that are presented on activities, that's all they start, say, the Industrial Revolution, when I came on board. And it has a slogan, and then it amps up. And it's like, you know, where's it ended? It has no topping point to this this graphic. So I certainly see the urgency in it. But it's a very long list of activities that we have engaged in for hundreds of years, and has only accelerated with economic growth and benefit, using what we've always done. And using what we've always done has to change. So it's going to take a while to unravel all this stuff. And obviously, there are areas where we can have more impact easier than other areas that's going to be more challenging. And I certainly think that's the extent. This is how you start that journey. And this is how you begin to put together the pieces that unravel it. Look at the drought situation we're in. Is that a one hour thing? Too many to handle. But a lot of the best thinking on it, and I'm already watching the scientific information, is beginning to add up. You just heard a piece on the climate impact last year. Will that continue? Small data points that may have significance. Sierra's becoming too warm, less key. Think you'd have to move to another area. Wine industry is impacted by climate change. It changes the climate for the main industry of our valley. That may have to be moved somewhere else as well as this continues. It's not going to stop overnight. The the impact is there. We will live with it for a while. But nothing will change unless we start making efforts to change that. I certainly agree, on an individual level, that's where all of us can make the most impact. But if we put together an organized effort around that, saying these are pieces all of us can own individually, to improve that, that gets the steps in the right direction. I was impressed with the fossil fuel industry, some of the pieces I've been reading about it, trying to convert vehicles over to electric. I don't know if anybody saw the Ford Motor Company advertisement on their electric trucks and electric vans for full delivery service. Running industry one today. One of the biggest polluters in the world are cargo ships. They burn bunker oil. It's a very, very low rate of petroleum. And there's a attempt to now to try and convert them over to another source of energy, something less polluting. Another piece that impressed me, there was a letter to the editor and several articles I read regarding electricity generation. It's always great when the sun's out. But when the sun's down, what do we use? Most electricity is generated off of natural gas, a carbon polluter, less significant than, say, bunker oil in a cargo ship, but nonetheless polluting. And by volume, a much larger amount produced. To attack that problem, it's going to be a challenge. Solar. My hometown's in the desert. Driving to a class reunion, passing, first time I noticed it, several dry lake beds are off in the distance as I drive down Interstate 10. I was talking to my wife, she says, that looks like water out there, but it hasn't rained. It's solar mirrors. And they're putting them in by the hundreds of acres down. And they're putting them in by, uh, the hundreds of acres down. Well, okay, that's great for, uh, energy conservation, uh, clean air. But what's the impact on the desert environment? That's another piece of it. So there's trade-offs on all this and it's, it's issues we're going to be dealing with going down this road for quite some time. I'm comfortable with this. If we don't change what we do, it's not going to get better. It's only going to go worse. And I think the charge for all of us, regardless of our community we are, is the whole issue of inclusion and equity. Who are the people who are not in the discussion? Do they need to be in the discussion? Yes, they do. Every one of us are part of the, uh, contributing to that problem that we're having. So we need to be more successful reaching out. And as I read through the, uh, resolution, um, I'm not clear here how we're addressing that issue about communities who are not engaged in the process. Uh, everyone has to be part of this. So I'm fine with the resolution as a starting point, but I think it needs to go further to make sure that we're getting the message and participation. And I internalize, as you say, in the well, that everybody realizes they have a, a piece of this. It's valuable to them. And it's valuable collectively to all of us. So thank you for giving me the time on that. Okay, uh, any further, if there's no further discussion, there's a motion on the, uh, on the item.
If, if Councilmember Washington, would you like to do the honors? I've hugged, uh, the motions a lot of times.
I would, but I, I have the, I have the resolution. It just went blank on me on my, uh, computer. So go ahead and.
I was going to.
Appreciate both of you being a part of making the motions. So then I will make a motion, if there's no other comments, uh, to adopt Resolution Number twenty twenty-two, next in order. A resolution of the City Council of the City of American Canyon, adopting the ad hoc Climate Action Committee's recommendation to declare a climate emergency.
I gladly second it. Very good.
Councilmember Joseph?
Yes.
Councilmember Oil?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Abadamos?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes. Thank you, Council. Our work has just begun. I really appreciate the effort that you, Councilmembers and, uh, and helping, uh, communicate this to American Canyon and all those who've been involved with this. Thank you. We'll move now to our next agenda item, which is number nine, City One Capital Improvement Needs and American Rescue Plan Action Funding Question.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and Teresa, if you wouldn't mind moving over. Erica and Felix Lincoln's already up here on the.
Okay.
The screen. And this item, uh, relates to some feedback we received from council late last fall as we were beginning to talk about, uh, uses of the American Rescue Plan Act funding that the city is to receive. But it's also kind of a compilation of some requests, uh, for a long, longstanding request really to have the whole picture on all of the city's, uh, capital needs. And so, uh, what staff has done is to go back and looked at the various studies and planning documents uh, that have existed out there and, and compiled them, uh, in one place. Uh, and, uh, before stealing all their thunder, I'll, I'll turn it over to Erica and Felix and Lincoln. But, uh, the idea tonight is to kind of present, uh, a summary of, of the needs and to begin to, uh, continue this discussion about what might be the best use of this, uh, this ARPA funding. So, uh, without further ado, uh, Polk Works Director, Erica Smithies.
Thank you. Um, are we going to be sharing the screen? There we go. Thank you, Lincoln. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, as you know, we've, we've provided this before at the workshop, but, uh, with the public, this is a, um, capital funding gap analysis and ARPA funding discussion this evening. Um, we can move to the next slide. Thank, thank you. Just for everyone, the funding gap is, is the known need for capital improvement projects versus the known revenue. That, that's how we get, come to our funding gap conclusion. And what's being provided tonight is over a five-year horizon. On the need summary for the city, uh, by category, this is, um, if we were to implement all the projects in the planning process, it's probably a low number. It's, it's a big number. It's a very large number, um, six hundred and forty-nine million. Probably again, a low estimate of the city's need to deliver all the wants and needs, um, for civic parks, transportation, street maintenance and utilities. Um, on the civic and park projects, um, there's a lot, a big list here. This is just highlighting some of the projects that we're aware of. Um, there's still a lot more to be happened in this, um, division. But as you can see, there, there's quite a bit of projects in the backlog, um, that have been identified over the years, in recent years, actually. And we need to find funding for it to complete. And now we have a new Parks and Rec Director to re, review, uh, and assess some of these projects. Um, transportation projects, approximately two hundred and eighty-seven million. Um, the, the four biggest projects are the new little drive extension. That's the north-south connector on the east side of twenty-nine. Um, the Highway twenty-nine multimodal improvements, which is currently in the, in the planning process. That's the biggest one. Um, the class one trail is citywide, um, about seventeen million. And then we have class two byclaim citywide. The, the, the two higher, the two bigger projects, um, are going to be a multi-stakeholder, um, project. You got Nepali Transportation Authority, you have the county as partners, and you also have state and regional partners to see this work done. Um, if we were to do all the streets in the next five years, we'll get about a seventy-two million dollar lap backlog to bring all the streets up to good condition. Um, we have a hundred thirteen existing lane miles and our PCI is a twenty-twenty with sixty-two, but it's gradually slipping. We're at fifty-nine. Go ahead. And then you see, here's a graph, you know, showing our PCI is really hovering over the good to poor. And we really need to keep our, our street numbers up before they start slipping off that, that, that graph here in front of us. Um, we gotta keep, people always ask, why are we doing streets, the newer streets? Why? I feel like we're just repaving or we're fixing the, the better streets all the time. There's a reason. We put dollars on the newer streets or better conditioned streets. It prolongs the life of those streets. The, the precipice is about the fifty-sixty realm, which is where we're hovering right now. It starts dropping off fast. We're looking at reconstruction projects, which a lot higher dollar to complete. Next slide, please. If we were to do this city streets over five years to maintain the current PCI, we need about thirteen million dollars, uh, which is about two and a half million a year. Um, the cost to increase the PCI by five, we need to start putting about four point six million dollars a year towards our city streets. And then fifty-three million if we were to do everything to bring it up to eighty-eight in the next five years. And that's, again, these are low estimates. It's just, we all know inflation, change of oil increases prices to do delivery payment projects. Um, but this is just a number at this point in time. And I'll let Felix take over the maintenance utility department here on the, the utility project delivery.
Uh, thank you, Director Smithies. Felix Hernandez, Maintenance Utilities Director. Um, as we look at the utility projects, um, two hundred and eighteen million, um, gap uh, with, with the group that we previously, um, and, and the first slide that we identified, this is, is the second largest behind streets. Um, in here, we have mobile projects with, um, the largest being annual water main replacements and, and then, um, several other smaller projects such as, uh, the Rio de Mar stormy and channel improvement. Um, more, more water sewer, Rancho Del Mar. Um, a few other water projects, so more water storage, I'll give you a water storage tank. Um, water, uh, high-pressure zones, so all high-pressure zones, um, expansion of the existing water treatment plant. Site reservoir is another source of water for the city that, that we're participating in. Um, it's one of the largest projects in, in the state since the, um, state water project. And that cost is to be determined. Recycle water main extension, um, ten million. And then a, along those same lines, waste water treatment upgrades and waste water pump station upgrades. Um, so that's what we have for utility projects. And, uh, this is the second largest, um, chunk of, of, uh, funds there, the gap.
So transitioning over to the existing, existing funding that we have for capital projects, we have approximately sixteen million in fund balances as of the end of this past fiscal year uh, from special revenue funds. Um, the, uh, measure A is a stormwater restriction, so it can be used for stormwater projects. Measure T, gas and the two gas taxes are more towards transportation. The LLADs and the Community Facilities District are more in the civic parks arena. Um, in capital projects funds, we have an additional five million in existing fund balances, uh, at this time after the end of last year. Um, we have various impact fees and, um, uh, and other capital projects funds that are restricted based on usages. That brings our total funding available to, um, twenty-one million dollars, um, which leaves us with the following funding gap. Um, again, um, these numbers are listed with, with the numbers that we had estimated, um, leaving about six hundred and twenty-eight million uh, of a gap beyond what we have right now. Uh, with that said, um, we do have an additional approximately four million in estimated annual revenues. Um, that doesn't include grant funding, regional, state and federal funding that, um, we would go after. Um, I know over the course of the past year, we've really, uh, tried to identify new areas to bring monies in to su- support projects that we wish to undertake. And, um, we hope to continue that effort going forward. And, uh, we also have the ARPA monies that are coming in, which leads us over to the ARPA funding discussion. Just as an overview, that's about four point nine million that we can apply towards, uh, various projects. Um, the goal is to partial, to have at least a partial appropriation by April thirtieth of this year. Um, if there are no appropriations prior to the first compliance report, uh, there are added, um, oversight requirements that the city must meet. Um, so the goal is to appropriate at least a piece by that point. A full appropriation must be made by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. And all funds must be expended by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, or they must be returned. Um, and with that, I will hand it over to City Manager Holly to lead the ARPA funding this one, uh, discussion.
Yeah, thank you, Lincoln. Uh, thank you, Erica and Felix for, for that information. Um, these questions should look familiar to the council. It's how we were talking about the ARPA funding late last fall. Um, we generally, uh, had gone through and came up with, uh, some potential projects given the, the scale of the, the funding that we have. And, um, next slide, please. We developed these questions and, and developed some different categories. And the first was, you know, with this limited one-time money, roughly five million dollars, should we be thinking about, you know, multiple small projects? Uh, or one large project or maybe, maybe two large projects? Um, some examples of the, the large projects are on the left-hand side of the screen and smaller projects are on the, the right-hand side of the screen. You know, it's really, um, we, lots of different examples for all these categories. But the first was a philosophical question, spreading it thinly over a, over a wide area or focusing it in one area. Because it was kind of that first question. Uh, the next slide, please. The second was more of a philosophical, philosophical question. Uh, should we address our deferred maintenance need? Um, you know, or should we embark on a new project? Uh, and there are examples of both. Um, the deferred maintenance need would generally be around utility systems or buildings, playground equipment, replacing those older existing ones or, uh, examples of, of new projects to embark on with this one-time money. Next slide, please. The other area that we wanted to focus some of the discussion on was, uh, utility or, or nonutility projects or general fund projects. Uh, general fund projects generally don't have their own dedicated funding sources, although we do have measure T, for example, it does provide for, and gas tax that provides for, for street maintenance. Um, utility projects, on the other hand, through their user rate structures have, uh, funding opportunities. And you can build, um, monies through rates and rate increases to do projects. Uh, whereas you have a more difficult time doing that in your general fund. So philosophically, should we be thinking about general fund, non-general fund projects? Uh, as a question. And last question, uh, on the last slide, please. Uh, should we be thinking about these projects as addressing a one-time need or a one-time benefit? Or should we be thinking about, uh, projects that might have a, a return on that investment that you could later quantify? Um, and so we, we identified some of those examples as well. Um, again, on the, on the left-hand side of the page and the right-hand side of the page, some example projects that would, that would be the one-time benefit. So, I think that's the last slide, if I'm not mistaken. Yeah. Um, we wanted really to, uh, open this conversation up for council and to get some, you know, direction or at least hear, uh, the philosophy that the council wants us to take. Uh, there is a bit of a timing issue and we don't have to make a full appropriation by April, but we do have to at least spend a little bit of the money um, in order to avoid some of those other requirements. Uh, we're not in danger of losing the money. It's just, uh, the procedures will be a little more challenging if, if we, if we don't take some action in the, in the next sixty to ninety days. So, um, there is some urgency around this conversation. Uh, all of us are here to answer any questions you might have or the questions the members of the public might have. And we, uh, look forward to your thoughts. Thank you.
Just pulling up the, uh, slides again. Uh, well, luckily, and it's always an issue with, uh, where's the money coming from? Um, I think it's important to, uh, uh, I like the return on investment. However, where, uh, also there's certain areas of the infrastructure that is, uh, not far actually failing and, uh, at these, uh, I think there's a level of urgency in some of these areas that we ought to consider as well. Uh, if we put in a, uh, what they said, expression, uh, pennywise pound foolish, if we don't do it now, it's going to be a lot more money later. And I don't see those categorized in that manner. Just where that we have an awful lot of projects to do and not a whole lot of, uh, can't fund all of it. So return on investment is a good concept. I like that. Over the long term, um, there might be ways of, uh, dealing with the cost of, uh, say, for example, playground equipment. Or so it's, uh, come on us in, uh, Napa before I move down here. We did three parks, you know, the playground equipment. You know, Napa Junction School, uh, Donald's Way School and the Elliott, uh, Street Park. Um, we were all volunteers to assemble and put together. There's one way to, uh, reduce costs. So I think we think creatively in those terms for some of the things that we're, we can have hands-on with uh, members of the community. That might be a way of being able to get a project done and reduce costs. Um, that's my comment for now. I'll take, uh, Councilmember Oil.
Thank you. Uh, what a blessing and a conundrum this whole thing is. Um, you know, there's four point nine million dollars here that we fell from the federal government sky. Um, we only had to endure a pandemic to get it. Uh, you know, and I, I've been thinking long and hard about this and like each of us council members and I, each citizen in town has a major wish list of things that we would like to see and get done. And, you know, my thing personally is, you know, municipal broadband. I would love to see that. Um, I think it would be great for the city, but realistically for me, it's not something that I think I would be the best use of ARPA funds. There's small projects throughout town. I'm trying to, I've been trying to approach this in a way that where the vanity project, along with the things that need to get done that you can't see, need to get done as well. I'm trying to consider what those things are. And sometimes, you know, giving money to a park over a sewer system that you can't see seems like the better thing to do because everybody gets to interact with it. But in reality is we're all interacting with infrastructure all the time. So I've had a hard time dealing with this. So I'm going to go back and ask this question to staff. And I'm going to present it in a way that is like. And I'm going to present it in a way that is like, if you were given five million dollars, what would you do with it? And I would say this in a way, and then just cage it in another way. The five million dollars from from the tech staff perspective, I know that there is, in fact, everything that you presented, Eric, on that list is probably a wish list of things that we've been needing to do for years. But I would ask, what is the one thing that we've just been punting and punting and punting that needs to be done? That may, that we can invest in, and that would give us the longevity of something? You know, how long could we make that five million dollars ride? And I think, you know, Jason had put in some things in here where, you know what, you could invest in something like broadband and it would drive economic development, maybe, I don't know. Um, I think it would, but wh- what is it that would give you back the most here? Or what is it combined with something that's just been sitting there for a while that we haven't been been able to hit to address, but now that five million dollars is raining from the sky, what do we do with it?
Yeah, thank you uh, for that question, um, Councilman Roel. Yeah, as staff has looked at it, we've been looking at it more on the side of the things that that the the thing that hasn't been able to get done. And that one that has really been, you know, a barrier. And we don't necessarily sit around wishing for things to fall from the sky, but like you said, this sort of has. Um, you know, for us, we're looking at the old part of town over in in Rancho. Uh, we're looking at the utilities and and Rio de Mar, the roadway. Um, there's a project over there that's been needed for a long time. Once that infrastructure was put in uh, well before we were incorporated. And I think we didn't preface this at the beginning of this conversation, but at some point to bear it out, and we talk about it in the staff report. Um, you know, American Canyon has a pretty unique history. Um, American Canyon, there were a lot of uh, development here. There were a couple thousand residents here when we incorporated. And before there was a city, it was the county, largely on the west side, but there was some on the east side. All of those improvements were put in when other people were in charge, when when the county was in charge. And so that infrastructure was put in, those taxes and those revenues were paid to the county, and there was a cycle, a life cycle of infrastructure that came and went when there was no American Canyon City Council. And so, you know, much of the deferred maintenance that we talk about wasn't built after incorporation and and not maintained over the last thirty years. Much of it was built sixty years ago or more um, and has struggled to be maintained. And so, as a as a new city, you know, with a couple thousand people in nineteen ninety-two, um, we only had a tax base of property tax. There was no sales tax and there was to speak of, and there was no T O T. And so you look at a city trying to form itself and trying to pull itself up from its bootstraps uh, with thirty and forty and fifty-year-old infrastructure that had, you know, not been maintained. And we and we know that because some of those streets are still there today. So um, part of the the gap that you see in that large eye-popping number you see on that slide, it wasn't like that all started in nineteen ninety-two. And I think there's some context that is helpful there. It's not as if that it was zero dollars in nineteen ninety-two and it's grown that large now. There was a large deficit to begin with. And we've struggled to to keep up with the with the new stuff since nineteen ninety-two, much less the stuff that was thirty and forty years old in nineteen ninety-two. Uh, but to answer to answer your question, we've been focused on the the old part of town, the the Rancho part of town, where um, we know there's infrastructure needs and pipelines. Uh, we know there's some I N I uh, in there in the sewer that would get fixed, and we know there's some roadways out there. Uh, we don't know the exact scope of of what we would do, but Rio de Mar, the road would be the primary focal point, plus the the side streets in that area. We also know there are some water lines that we fixed for them over the la- over the period of January, we had some severe water leaks. There's some key locations where we have some water lines that need to get repaired. And they're they're going to get repaired one way or another, uh, because we we're not going to be able to to withstand uh, too many more years of this, but uh, our focus has been on those critical pipelines and and really the the old Rancho area.
Yeah, you know, thank you for that. I mean, and then as I look deeper at the options, as as we look through this and and consider it in conversations with other folks, like that that seems worthy. We did a little bit of that, I think, on Los Altos, right? And that road there looks a lot better. Um, it is a busy road. Rio de Mar, I would argue, is going, is one of our main drags. It literally is like, so you come in from the seven eleven and you go all the way down to the wetlands. It's a lot, probably most people go to wetlands that way. I don't know if they take the eucalyptus route, locals probably do, but I think the people that are visiting it. So thank you for your opinion. That that's kind of um, how I'm thinking about approaching this. I'd love to hear more from council members and the public as well. Thank you for it.
That's member Joseph. Yes, so first of all, thank you for the presentation. Um, this idea of figuring out how much it's going to cost to maintain all of our roads and parks is something I've been asking for and looking forward to for years, so I appreciate uh, staff coming forward. And 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 obviously, I I think staff would agree that there's a lot more analysis and and some work that needs to be done on the numbers. Uh, the biggest concern for me is that there seems to be some blending of ongoing costs, you know, road maintenance, for example, is kind of an annual expense. I mean, you could say it's seventy-two million dollars is a lump sum, or it's four or five million a year, but either way, it it's distinct from the twenty-nine corridor improvements, which is a massive number, but it's a one-time hit. So if if staff could kind of try to somehow convert it all into either an annual number or a one-time number, that would just help somebody like me to try to get my arms around it. The second part is that there are some projects that will have funding. Um, the twenty-nine corridor, for example, um, the fact that it is in Caltrans's planning queue now uh, means that they will probably be coming up with a sizable amount of the of the costs. Uh, I think talking to the city manager, uh, we're probably in line because of all the affordable housing that we've been doing that will probably get access to pots of money, because we're doing the kinds of things the state wants cities to do. So yeah, I think it's reasonable to assume that some of these big numbers are going to be addressed with outside dollars. And so with that in mind, my approach on all of this would be focusing primarily on deferred maintenance. Uh, because and and away from the twenty-nine corridor and away from those projects that we think we've at least got a shot at getting grants or or some kind of outside money. So focusing on deferred maintenance, such as what the the manager was saying, although as a, you know, long-term finance guy in municipal government, we always want to protect your general fund. So uh, if I were choosing between water utility line projects and and asphalt, I'd I'd go for the streets or the parks over the utilities, but you know, uh, the reality is, there's probably not enough money that it's worth that kind of a fight, but but in general, uh, deferred maintenance probably more towards streets and parks, just because utilities does have a funding stream, albeit, you know, utility rates that nobody wants to pay. The last piece to the puzzle, though, is um, I I would set a few bucks aside for new and exciting stuff. For example, even though we received a comment suggesting we don't spend any of it on Clark Ranch, I would disagree in part because I think that's a major asset. Um, I think we're becoming well-known for our our amenities out there. Uh, we have some grant monies that require a match, so we should be looking to have some money at least to make sure we can follow through on the grant funding uh, that we have, because we need to follow through on those projects and they have matching requirements. But we could throw a few bucks out uh, for animals, you know, recognizing the the uh, last-minute uh, advocacy for uh, dealing with feral cats. I I do think we ought to throw some money out there, uh, because I do think it's a a long-term investment. But as council member Roel and I met with the Parks Foundation about a possible public art site at Wetlands, it also brings to mind that maybe we should set a few bucks aside for public art. Nothing significant, but a few bucks, um, just so that we're getting as many uh, many checks on the list of things we need to do as we can with that four point nine million dollars. So those are my suggestions. Yeah, again, primarily focusing on the deferred maintenance, but leaving a little bit for the for the fun stuff.
Any comments from council? Well, I'm in agreement on the deferred maintenance. I mean, I think the uh, I don't know that I uh, necessarily agree with council member Joseph on asphalt over utilities. I think the thing that can, I mean, this is why I would say that. I I think you raise a very good point. But for me, uh, leaking water mains is water loss. It's a revenue that we're spending, it's literally going down the drain or wherever it goes into, leaks into sewer lines. You know, we uh, the leaky main that came that comes down from highway twenty-nine from north of us, I think that was several hundred acres of water loss, just going to nowhere, feeding the toolies along the road. And uh, saving that uh, um, considerable amount of water that we didn't just lost that one. So I really am uh, impressed with favorably with the city's effort to get after the big leaks, mainly, hopefully, there are no larger water mains on that. Rancho was um, oh geez, I just got a uh, an advertisement my son sent me of uh, right here in the end of Teresa. New development, it was the first part of uh, Rancho de El Mar, stated nineteen fifty-four. Teresa wasn't even a street, it just had the uh, Los Altos on it and the loop. Uh, a lot of those streets, uh, I agree, are original. I mean, on the south end of Napa Square, down by the closer to Vallejo. Uh, we had one street there, I think, my and Stetson, and one next to it, was down to the dirt, had the original asphalt on it. Very creative plan. Uh, come on down, teach us how to use this equipment. It's in Napa, we've borrowed their equipment and our crew, and we did a paving on that street. You know, there was some very creative, thank you. Uh, thank you for that. Uh, I think uh, but I kind of go in with uh, Councilmember Joseph as well. There's got to be something, if there's programs out there where matching grant money can be uh, can be of a benefit. I think there ought to be some, I don't know the amount on that yet. But grant money is basically free money with an intention to go for something for public benefit. And if we can match that, sometimes you can get a project done, rather than you struggle forever or you don't get a project done. Uh, involved with a number of organizations that use uh, grant monies from different agencies within the state. So I I think there's a, there's benefit to considering that. Yeah, there's uh, it's kind of shocking when you look at the uh, the amount of uh, estimates, what we need and, you know, the the inefficient, uh, insufficient funds that are available to to make all that, but that's always our challenge. And uh, but I think we have to make some effort toward uh, those that are a long-term benefit. Uh, deferred maintenance particularly, it's because they're only going to get worse. Um, if there's a benefit for the greater good of the community, certainly I can get behind that. And you know, maybe on a on a grant uh, program type of uh, putting our part in and getting a grant, you make something happen. That would work for me as well. Other comments from council? Are we ready for public call? Sounds like we are. You're muted, sorry.
Mayor Garcia, I do have uh, people with hands raised. First, we're going to call in uh, Tammy Wong.
Okay.
Go ahead, Tammy. Oh, wait. Hmm, there we go. Go ahead, Tammy, sorry about that.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, good evening again, mayor and council. Um, thank you for reading our the comments that I sent in, along with other comments from the community about um, how to best spend the ARPA funds. I think I do want to point out that the only written comments received all requested funding to help the community cats. And I want to point out that part of what I read about the ARPA funds is that it's supposed to be response and recovery from COVID nineteen due to this public health emergency. And one of the reasons why there is such a problem with community cats now is that all the staying neuter clinics were closed in twenty twenty due to COVID nineteen. So there is a whole generation of cats out there that couldn't be stayed in neuter. They had kittens, and now all those kittens, a year later, they're out there breeding. And so this is definitely a problem that communities throughout the nation face. And the advantage that that we all have here is you have many dedicated and passionate people who care for these animals and are doing their best to help them, but we they need more support. We need the city to step up and help and provide support, because residents cannot do it alone. This problem does not belong to us, belongs to us as a community. And one of the things I had mentioned before is as we bring more people in with our new development, they bring their animals in. And when they abandon their animals, that's where the feral cat population comes from. It comes from abandoned cats. So please, I hope to see more of you support this idea. Thank you. Um, Councilmember Joseph for explicitly stating your support for it, and I hope the other council members will support this. I'm not asking for the entire four point nine million dollars for it. I recognize, you know, we do have other items of importance, and I for one will also advocate, as always, that we spend a chunk of this on active traffic calming. Um, I've had some great conversations with um, Director um, Smithy's about this. And I I hope that we can expand the traffic calming program to other areas of the city and to support our climate change resolution. I hope that you will also support bicycle transportation. We need more bicycle parking. I mean, the Wetlands Edge Park, highly popular, highly visible outdoor sports gym, no bicycle parking. So please look at some of these things. This is a windfall. Let's not just spend it on deferred maintenance and projects that the city should be funding anyways. Let's spend it on some things that will really benefit and enrich our community.
Tammy, you're at three minutes. Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have Chris James. Chris, go ahead.
Yeah, um, yeah, thanks for um, this topic tonight. Um, first off, I wanted to say that I don't think we should be taking on any new projects. I think we need to be focusing on um, short-term um, projects that are going to benefit as many people as we can. Um, everyday things like, I know, park maintenance, there are parks in a, in my my neighborhood with rotting benches or rusty benches, um, trash cans that are just dilapidated. Um, like Tammy said, there's no bike parking in many of our parks. If we wanted to encourage people to use our parks and and to get out and um, save the environment, to get out of our cars, then we need to mo- you know, to support our bicyclists. Um, with regard to that as well, um, you know, street safety, um, you know, more bike lanes, um, and making safer streets, um, street maintenance, I think, is also very important. Um, improving sidewalks and pedestrian access, wheelchairs at a number of crosswalks that I use throughout the city, um, that have very poor, no wheelchair access across the street, um, from one park to another. Um, and if you ever, if you want me to park, I can do that anytime.
So sorry, I'm breaking up there.
Chris, you're having some feedback, some breaking up and feedback.
Okay, I'll slow down a bit. Um, yeah, so I think, I I don't feel you hate about, you know, the wheelchair access and a number of of our sidewalks is pouring some parts of neighborhoods, especially the old neighborhoods. Um, Clark Ranch is important, but I don't think any of this money should go to Clark Ranch at this point. It would probably just go to, you know, some consultants. It wouldn't benefit the city directly in the short term, so we need to look at projects that are going to happen now. Um, and if we could tie in climate, um, that'd be great. I like what Mark was saying, and my, I'm sorry, um, David Roel was saying about city um, broadband or or fiber. Um, that's going to improve um, people to work from home more, encourage more local businesses. And um, so that, you know, that would tie into the, you know, your proaction regarding climate change and um, actions to support um, the reduction of um, um, fossil, you know, use of fossil fuels. So again, short-term projects that could benefit as many people as we can, and and um, um, I don't envy you trying to come up with a solution to this. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have Justin Hamilton-Hole. Go ahead, Justin.
Uh, hello. Uh, hello, how you doing? Thank you, ma- mayor and state health thing. And I want to shout out Erica um, because I had a a phone call with her, a couple stuff. Um, my story back in back in two thousand one, our street had to pay, pay for Niall Jones' awesome way. And I don't know, we need to, uh, our street need to pay, because I noticed there's something on a treat that the back mark. But um, I don't know, our street need to pay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. I have Cheryl Brooke. Go ahead, Cheryl.
It's actually Steve Brooke, we just shared that.
Okay, Steve, go ahead.
Say you're welcome.
She's sitting right here next to me too. So anyway, I was really. Concerned about the the street maintenance. And I know that seventy two million dollars you have listed as a five year plan. But the five year plan listing streets that need to be paved leave off the most, most. The most needed streets that have that need to be paid. Because there, I've seen it finally, I got it after two years of asking. So I, that four point nine million should go towards the deferred maintenance. It's it's meant to. Do the best for the most people in the city. And I think that this deferred maintenance does the best for all the citizens of American Canyon. You know, the parks and stuff, I'm all for that too, but you know, we could do some fundraising for that. And I don't want to get to a point where we have to have. People going out and filling potholes on their own like, like City of Loyal does. But if it comes to that, hey, maybe we have to do that. But I really consider putting that money towards the deferred maintenance, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Garcia, there are no other hands raised.
Okay. Well, pause for a minute in case we get past that. Very good, well, then we'll close the topic on it, return to council for further discussion. Side action. The conversation this evening about. What priorities we want to see. Hang on, let me bring this part up again.
Mayor, one thing I also wanted to mention, we've been thinking about this money as it's, you know, one time money and it comes in its own fund and. It it wouldn't be used or staff at least had envisioned bundling it with other funding sources, so we weren't trying to just find a. Project or two that would be four point nine million dollars, we would be looking at other funding sources, Measure T, for example, some of our utility funds, you know, so. The idea of one or two projects in our mind was going to be a variety of funding sources. You know, including predominantly the ARPA funding, but there would be others, so. We, the notion of leveraging funds, potentially leveraging outside funds like grants and things has very much been on our mind as well. But, you know, just wanted to clarify, although we we've, we put this money in a separate bucket for accounting purposes. When a project is coming forward, we'd be looking at blending it with a variety of funding sources.
I just thought it occurs to me on this, say, for example, take David. There's an engineering look at it, there's a public works look at it. But I drive on my street, how much does it cost? Per increment, is it a foot yard, how are we measured, what's the cost to do that much? Then, you know, I could chase off my street and go, wow, sticker shop. But yeah, I mean, it's a, there's a slurry seal you put on the newer streets and, you know, we had a program with that for a while and folks said, well, how come you didn't repave my street, well. Slurry seal protects the street and it's cheaper and it's like preventative maintenance. But you get down there where we, what's the term, they got the alligator breakout, alligator skin on the street. Was it, Deadwood's got a lot of it between here and the city limit line going south. Point to Rio Del Mar, yeah. Yeah, it's, it needs a lot of work. I think it's kind of helps people put in perspective if we say. We're going to do X number of feet, it's going to cost this amount increment, measurement amount. Depending on floor seal or repaving it. Discouraging the hair, we're down to now fifty nine on our pavement condition index. And but that's only going to hit south from there. So I do appreciate. This is a. Presentation at the city retreat on, you know. What it costs, et cetera, you know, the impact of this and having to. Spend quite deal more effort once the the surface of the road gets set to that lower quality. That being said, let's see, what was the council member Ora?
Yeah, you know, the more I think about this, I I I feel like some sort of maintenance needs to be done and like if we have, you know, years. Hard things like digging up pipe, getting that done, it may not be as sexy. But it's the right thing to do, particularly in somebody, in that part of the city that we are in. The Rio Del Mar area, people that have been here, the homes that have been here the longest. If we're having troubles now, we may as well take advantage and kind of fix that, because that is an investment you make today. That can be fifty years down the road, you're not replacing that pipe for another fifty years. So I'm kind of leaning towards that way. One of the, one of the speakers talked about feral cats. I appreciate the input and comments, just because. You're sending in a written comment doesn't mean we're not talking to other people who are having other things, we hear these things from others and they may not participate and do a written comment. I I personally cannot. Vote for using something on an issue that's new to me when I have issues like roads and streets and parks that have. Been prioritized for a long time, so I can't be voting for anything for feral cats, but I appreciate the comments. It is now an issue that I understand more, I'd be happy to look at it. In the future to find ways to to mitigate that issue. But I'm leaning towards, you know, some sort of infrastructure, and I have a question for the city manager. What are you looking for tonight, just direction, discussion, then you're taking notes? And then you're going to come back, is that what it is?
I, yes, councilmember Oro, tonight is, there's no action tonight, we're just trying to take a temperature of the council, I I do know we haven't heard yet from. Vice Mayor Abadamos or Councilman Washington, but, you know, we would like to bring back a package to you all. That says, here's something that we think addresses, you know, your feedback and. And here's what we intend to do or recommend that we do, ultimately, you would have to make the appropriation. So there would be a final action by the council, but at this point, we're trying to. Get on the same page, you know, and bring something that's going to get five of you to say yes.
Yeah, sure, no problem, and I guess I'll just reiterate one of my final comments here. Unless somebody says something, I feel like I need to comment again. The. I I've come down from my Nirvana wishlist of what I could do from these things and looking at. You know, there's this shiny new object that I could fund. But in reality, there is the nitty gritty that we need to do. And I'm leaning towards that way and that's, I'm leaning towards some sort of infrastructure project to move this, to to repair parts of this city, thanks.
I just thank you for that comment, I just wanted to comment briefly on the cat situation. Well, it's their season right now, so there's a lot of. Growling and hissing and chasing around, my street, or actually it was a neighbor, neighbor. The cross street from us. Took it on themselves with the neighbors, they went to human, they got the cat traps, they trapped the animals, had them, took them down to have them stayed and neutered. And they've been doing this for quite some time, they've got less cats in the neighborhood now than we had before. I'm shaking the comment about all the kittens that are born because we had an awful lot of them there for a while. But I think just, I just applaud the the effort of those who wanted to get this up and do it then responsible and correctly. That being said, who was up first here, Chair Washington, Mary Madaloff, sorry, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Washington.
I think Mark was up first.
After the two of you, since I've already talked and you guys haven't.
I'm okay with you going first, Pierre, go ahead.
Thanks, I'm probably, you know, well, not probably, I am more in support of the infrastructure ideals, I appreciate the presentation by you, Erica, Felix and Lincoln, I think. I think you put some long thought process into this. Regarding the the feral cats, I was a part of a meeting probably this time last year, I believe. Chris and Tammy were involved in it, Jaime from the vintage rag area was on it. And some of the concerns I have with that is that even even that small group, it's probably about seven people, that that group of people. Had different ideals on how they thought that should be addressed as well. So I'd be more than open to sit down and listen with that committee or that group again. Because then they themselves did not have a particular direction or solution of how they wanted to address it. They were talking about the cat traps and there were some that were pro cat traps, some that were against cat traps, because all the other things that occur with the cat traps, so. I think that this, the monies that we're talking about now would be more valuable in return on investment with the infrastructure rehabilitation for our city, so. That's where I stand, I enjoy the dialogue. But again, I would open it up and I would clearly attend another one of those feral cat committees, there has a lot of good information about it, but. There are behaviors that a lot of the residents, there are several residents that support them and feed them and do those type of things. And, you know, that's like chasing chickens, almost like you got to figure out, you know, what's the best way to address it, but I think an ad hoc committee. Of people who have those similar concerns. Can get together and come up with a solution that they agree upon, but the last meeting I went on. With some of the residents, they weren't in agreement, so it's kind of difficult, it was a lose lose situation in my opinion. So the monies that we have, the infrastructure, the things that Erica, Felix and Lincoln just mentioned. I'm more supportive of getting our city streets and pipelines up to date and especially on the west side of our city.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Abadamos.
That was very interesting, actually, I didn't know that there was a committee that met on community cats, so thank you for sharing that with us, Councilmember Washington. I actually agree with that statement, I think it'd be a good idea to have a citizens committee formed and have them come back and give us more information on how to deal with that issue. Currently, where I stand is, I I'm thinking of something that Councilmember Oro said during our strategic plan session. And it was about getting those small ball things accomplished, things that you can see almost immediately. And what I'm looking at, I'm looking at the PowerPoint slide that Director Smithy's and. Mr. Hernandez just shared with us, and I'm looking at class two bike lane citywide, that's only a million dollars. I know only is not the right word, but in the grand scheme of things, four point nine million isn't going to get us a whole lot with city streets, right? But if we're doing class two bike lane citywide and maybe bike racks. All over the parks, that's something that we can see and it's small ball and it's feasible with that four point nine million and then. Whatever's left over, I'm super supportive of fixing our streets, pipes that are under them, the potholes that are in them, I think I said last time, we talked about streets as. Now that I'm pregnant, I can feel every freaking pothole in the city. My whole stomach is just like, whoa. So I'm very supportive of that, but four point nine million isn't going to get that accomplished for us. And I know you said, Mr. Hawley, that. It would be in conjunction with other sources of funding, I'd like to see more information on that and what that can bring. Maybe in addition with a couple of these small ball things like the class two bike lane citywide. That's something that we've been talking about, it definitely fits with our overall plan for the future of the city, we're trying to make the city more walkable, pedestrian friendly, bike friendly. And it's small ball and we can afford it if we have five million extra bucks, right? So I'm a little bit torn, I would like to use some of it for the small ball and see if we can use the rest of it to maybe get an extra street paved or something.
Anyway, I like your small ball concept there, bike racks, I think would be very helpful. Safely Walmart the stores around town, make sure we do an assessment of that.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think now we're to Councilmember Joseph.
Well, I I think having heard everybody, I'd like to suggest that. Maybe we look at a number around eighty five to ninety percent of the amount of the dollar amount. Be earmarked towards infrastructure and in particular streets. And combining that with the utility project. You know, tear up the road to replace the pipelines, then you got to replace the asphalt, so you kind of. Solves two headaches with admittedly a lot of money, but but you could combine utilities and street maintenance. And use a lot of that infrastructure money for that. So I would like to suggest that maybe we target, you know, like I said, eighty five to ninety percent. And then the balance could be used for the small balls and in particular, and I apologize for not bringing it up earlier. You would think, having talked about climate emergency, I would have been the first one to say, hey, let's set some money aside to deal with climate change. You know, granted, the committee is going to be looking for grant funding and everything else, but. You know, maybe fifty to a hundred grand set aside for climate change actions. Could also be a pretty impressive demonstration, so. Let me throw climate change funding out there on the table and earmark a few bucks for that as well. But in particular, maybe eighty or ninety percent earmarked for infrastructure deferred maintenance, I think. That's the the best way to go is, in my opinion.
We're going to take away the song, Councilmember Oro.
I wasn't trying to say anymore, anything more, but. Somebody mentioned my name. I have to remind you that man credited me with the small ball concept. So that said, this is why we're a team, right, so this is why there's five council members, because we're bringing across different views. And I did bring that up on the strategic offside and I think it is fair, right? And I like Vice Mayor Joseph's idea of eighty to ninety percent of it to infrastructure. Because now that I thought about it a little bit more, I'll give you a little story, I. I was fortunate enough to come across money recently, a few years back, and I was like, oh. I'm going to pay some bills and debts that I had to take care of, I did that. But my wife had been wanting this very expensive watch for a very long time. I took a little slice of that and got her a very nice expensive watch. And it went a long way, that shiny new little object went a very long way. And I also took care of some problems that were like monkey debt burdens on my back. So now I'm like, okay, let's let's find one or two things on your on your comment. Vice Mayor Joseph around environment, rather than the climate change.
Member Joseph.
Councilmember Joseph, yes, I'm, my apologies. So the comment around that, I I think we should actually do an implementation thing and I'm cool with bikes, right, what is the. Antithesis of of cars, it's bikes and washing. That, and it's also environmentally friendly, it is actually something that we actually put in place. I was just in Berkeley for the last two days and they do a good job, it's a very busy place, they do a lot of bike lanes and things of that nature out there. We could easily do that with some funding and with some partnerships. So I like the idea of eighty percent, eighty to ninety and whatever ten percent we can have, so thank you for the discussion.
Discussion, thank you. Yeah, I think I'm going to go out tomorrow and this week, make an inventory of where there are bike racks and whether or not, because I think. To Vice Mayor Abadamos's point on that, that's going to encourage people to buy your bike to the store or to. The restaurant or wherever in town, and I don't, well, I had one. Comment came from a family near me, the daughters like to ride down to Safeway to go shopping, there's no bike rack in Safeway, so, okay, well. That could be target number one.
I I just had a flash lightbulb moment. Why, why haven't we or why can't we or can we start requiring new businesses to build bike racks? When you were speaking, Mr. Mayor, what I was thinking is, we don't really have control over private property, we only really have. Control over city land, so we can put bike racks at the parks and stuff, but can't we make a new policy?
I think we've been doing it, we're doing it.
We already do, all the, all the stuff over at the new, new commercial over in Apo Junction, for example, there are bike racks over there, Safeway though. You know, a prior generation really of development, not the same development standards.
They have them at Safeway. Yeah, they have them.
I'm sure there's some.
There's one by Starbucks.
Starbucks.
There's also one by the the back entrance of Safeway, the other door.
And Hampton Inn that we just approved will have bike racks, covered bike racks and outside, so.
Well.
I think your points will.
Tell you what, I'm going to check it out this week and we'll find out where they are. Thank you.
But it would be nice to have a bike rack out at Wetlands Edge and that may be.
Yeah, there's another, right, totally within our control. Our bike racks at every park, but we'll. Analyze this thing very easily, it's a nice small ball, I forgot. Hey, council, any further discussion on this side? Will they move on?
If I can, I want to maybe recap a little bit, make sure we kind of got the page I'm seeing is the page you all are on. So we can bring back something to you in 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 March. Generally, supporting the notion of tackling some of our deferred maintenance needs, you know, with a combination of funds, not just ARPA. You know, with a combination of funds, not just ARPA, but bringing, bringing in some other funding sources like Measure T and our utility funds. The idea around eighty to ninety percent of the, the ARPA money being used and then. Uh, the remaining balance of that to, to kind of tackle some of these more uh small ball items, uh bike lanes and bike racks. Uh, potentially saying uh some side of money for uh, for climate change. And um, and looking at local matches for some of our grants, uh particularly at, at Clark Ranch. Uh, where we have an existing grant and, and what the local match for that might be. So, um, I don't think I've. Missed anything else, just a couple of comments. Um, as we look at our, our development and our engineering standards. Uh, traffic calming and safety and, and class two bike lanes and everything are all part of the package already. So as we started thinking about, for example, Rio de Mar. Uh, as we would put something back at Rio de Mar, we would have class two bike lanes. Uh, and there are other streets that we maybe would do. If they're in the bike plan now, and we go through a project through that area, it, it gets the full complete streets treatment. So we're looking at ADA ramps, for example. We're looking at class two bike lanes, that sort of thing. So it's, if we're gonna go and be touching an area uh like that with an investment, we put now a complete street standard on it. So we may be tackling some of the. Topics that were raised, just for, that's our standard now, how we do our business. Um, that's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Other comments?
Yeah, I mean, um, uh, Jason, if you could, you, if you could add something to where it shows like a barometer check just for transparency, so we can kind of see where the money is being distributed. Um, it could be a pie chart of some sort for easy access. When you look at it, you say this, that a two percent went to this, five percent went to that. Uh, es- especially with, when it comes to these funds that we're talking about, that we're trying to figure out how we're gonna spend it. I guess it's something for a quick glance. I think. The, the, the residents would appreciate at least seeing it and it gives us an ideal of uh how we need to address. Questions that might be brought up to us, whatever happened with that money, you know, because, okay, well, we have a pie chart called, you know, whatever we want to call it. Uh, and it should, it has a breakdown of how the money was distributed. Uh, it could be something that, you know, Director Smithy's could, could add to one of her powerpoints, because she does an excellent job with them. So, um. It would just be an easy, quick laugh for the, for the residents.
Yes, definitely.
Okay. Ready for uh management staff or reports? Mr. Orl.
Yes, we are, Mayor. Um, three different updates and then I have one of my own. Um. Since Maria's already on the screen, uh, maybe we'll start uh with you, Maria. And after that, we have Ally and Lincoln as well.
Okay, sure. Um, good evening, Mayor and Council. I wanted to share that um. The Napa Valley College Career Center and the American Canyon Chamber of Commerce. Organized a job fair that was held here in American Canyon on the twenty-sixth of January at Adobe Lumber, which is great. Um. I'm told that we had about forty-seven employers that participated from the area and there were about eighty to ninety attendees. Also, um, I wanted to highlight that at our booth, we had a Wi-Fi enabled iPad. And so that allowed people to sign on and um subscribe to our job notifications or our city newsletter or anything like that that we have. Gov delivery. So I thought that was really great. Uh, we had about twenty-two people sign up for that and we had um. Roughly about fifty pieces of material handed out, which had information about. Our website, we're gonna sign up for jobs and different things like that. At that time, uh, we actually didn't have any actual job openings, but we saw this as an opportunity to just connect with um prospective. Future employees, talk about why American Canyon is the employer of choice, uh, why it's great to work and join um local government. We have to. You know, we have to find someone to replace us, right, eventually? So anyway, um, because of our participation, we do have a new forged connection with the Napa Valley College, which I think is great, and a career center. Where our job openings now are going to be sent to their twenty-four hundred list of subscribers automatically when we share it with them. And they also have a career center webpage, so now we'll be featured on their webpage. And I know that they also have a recruitment event coming up in the spring, which we also plan to participate. And I'm reading a lot more about um the other services they provide to their students, including internship workshops, where you can talk with them about internship opportunities. Uh, at your locations. In our case, we would want to talk with them about possible internships here in the city. So I just wanted to share that, um, you know, in this time of COVID, it is difficult uh to have interactions with people and connect with the community. But I thought that this was a great way for our HR department to connect with members of the community and other employers and um, you know, highlight why American Canyon is. Um, a great place to work.
Thank you.
Thank you for that update, uh, Maria. Uh, and great job for the HR team. Uh. Teresa, if you wouldn't mind bringing Ally over and in the meantime, uh, Lincoln has uh an update also that he wanted to share.
Good evening, uh, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to update you. I um. Mentioned a few months ago that we applied for the water arrears program to cover past due utilities for water bills. Um, that has, that has re- received final approval and. The wastewater arrears program just opened and um. We are submitting an application for a hundred and nineteen thousand uh plus admin uh expenses. Um, Dominic Patrick has led the effort of submitting these uh requests and we should be. Putting in uh this request for approval uh in the coming week or two, and I will keep you informed as to the progress on that.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you for that, Lincoln. Uh, Ally, uh, you have an update you wanted to share.
Sure, thanks, Jason. Um, so I do want to just inform um everybody that we have officially launched our new registrations, registration software, Civic Rec. Um, and. Members of our community can register online with a new household account. Spring registration will start on February ninth, so. We encourage everybody to take a look at everything that we're offering in the next, from um February, March, April and May. Um, I would also like to announce that ACCPF um has launched their hearts, hearts are park. Um, and they are going to be offering two upcoming free community events. One will be on Saturday, February fifth at Shannon Doa Park. And it is a community painting and that will be from ten AM to twelve. And then they also are hosting a Wetlands Coffee Morning on Saturday, February nineteenth. From nine thirty to eleven. And then in partnership with um. Just everything that's going on down the Wetlands and everything that's going on in the community, the Parks and Recreation Department team is going to be hosting a butterfly. Box cleanup at the Wetlands on February twelfth. From nine AM to twelve. We are currently looking for volunteers for that project. So if anybody's interested, we encourage them to go online to our website. And go to our volunteers page and sign up to become a volunteer to participate. Thank you.
Thank you, Ally.
Thank you.
Um, I don't know, uh, uh, Councilmember Oro had a question for staff.
Yeah, I would don't go too far or maybe Jason, you can help out. Um, the Civic Rec. I think we, we used to have another vendor, I forget what it was called. Did Civic Rec is a whole new signup? So if you were in the old one, you have to sign up for the new one, correct?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to understand that and make sure that is it. Hopefully the UI is a lot better and the other one.
It's uh light years ahead of it. It's, it's, it's uh contemporary, twenty twenty-two uh versus nineteen ninety.
Okay, wow.
Uh, just quick update, Mayor, uh, both myself and an assistant. Uh, City Manager Heda will be down uh at the League of California Cities City Manager Conference uh starting tomorrow. As annual gathering of city managers, assistant city managers from across the state. Uh, various presentations, a lot of the same challenges that our city is facing or faced by others, and it's a great. Opportunity to learn how they're solving problems and also kind of build our networking base. So uh, we'll be there. We're still working. We'll be responding to emails and things like that, but. Um, we're excited to go down to that, that conference uh, uh, later this week.
Alright, surely bring back home uh other good takeaway information.
I always do.
I'll make sure I check in on the webpage on the new uh volunteer site. Uh, the number of people I talk to uh in my connections in town just. Want an activity to do. So, but yeah, well, guess what? We can keep you busy. So thank you for the report. Can you say further from uh?
No, Mayor, thank you.
Right.
Thank you very much, Todd. We had a public works.
Oh, you're right. I apologize, Erica. I made you put together this beautiful report and I just forgot about all that.
It was on the agenda and everything.
The reports and I was thinking, okay, you know, it's up to us to look at her.
No, we're done with the, with the benign reports. Now we're into the super duper reports.
I thought I was getting off, off easy.
Working up to the main event here.
Uh, boy, I provided uh council an update this afternoon. I didn't think we had a chance to look at the details, like every capital improvement project, an overview of administration details and um. Capital improvement projects and operations, but I did want to highlight um on, on the oil report, the development that's going on as far as capital improvement projects. Um, as we are aware, Dublin Road is still under construction. Um, we did a live um Facebook um update on Friday with Jen Kansenback, Communications Manager. Um, it's looking pretty great out there. Um, we're getting very close to a final finish grade before they start paving, but we still have this due finish up at the utilities. Um, we're looking at April twentieth date, um pending no further, we need rain, but it's dry right now, so we're making the best efforts out there. Um, we got the water, recycled water online last week, so I think we're working, we, we are working with many utilities on. Getting our PGME development project contractor um tied into uh recycled water, so they're off of potable. Um, we're hoping that gets, gets done this week or next week. Um, but that's big news on, on getting off our total water demand for construction projects. Um, and our development areas, um, in Napa Logistics Park and Amazon. Um, our projects that are currently under design, you put the sidewalk, we received um from fairly good news from a right away. We've taken, we, um, the schedule provided today still shows a, a long-term construction or advertisement date for construction because we're. We're really trying to take the time with the property owners and meeting an amicable resolution on the right away. And I, I believe we got a verbal concurrents um on some of the latest plan revisions we've done. So we're hoping in the next few weeks, we can finalize agreements. With the property owners and hopefully move up a construction date. Much sooner. Um, it's a long term right now in case we have to go to the long, um, not eminent domain, but. Right to do the work um process, which is about six months if, if we don't meet. Amicable relations with the property owners, but it looks good right now. Um, Green Island Road, that is like a March bid advertisement date for the Rule Twenty. Um, electrical undergrounding, uh, we still have to resolve some AT&T um that we've discussed with um the city attorney. Um, that, that doesn't hurt us with the PGME portion of work going in because they always have to come first. Um, it looks about like a December, January, if, if all the, the. All the timing goes right off, off of now start without a hitch. This year with PGME and the, the main undergrounding of the project. Um, AT&T would be teed up by the end of this year, early January to do their part with remove the poles and then. Look at the roadway reconstruction project as next summer's project. Um. And then we have the, the annual pavement project. We're hoping with that will be another bid advertisement date at the end of this March. To tee up for a good construction project this June. Um, we, we didn't talk about this evening, but um at the workshop we discussed trying to do some different circus. Um, treatments versus overlays, so we can spread the city dollar. And try to do more streets this year that, that are in the local residential neighborhoods. Um, we're compiling those streets, we're doing street uh reviews um in person, like driving by and walking some of those street sections to see if we can do more this year. And then focus an overlay on, say, the recycle pipeline extension to on Benton Way. So. Trying to spread the dollar everywhere on a citywide annual pavement project this year. So, um. That's really a summary of the big projects. Anything else you'd like to know? Um, on other things, please, please ask me. Thank you.
Certainly sounds like your business. Everyone's old mom. Oh, well, thank you for all the work effort. It's uh, it's looking pretty awesome out there on, particularly on Dublin Road. One benefit of dry weather, you can, you can move dirt, you know?
Mayor, I, I did have a couple of questions. Uh, you're right. I mean, it, it's the interesting trade-off in, in the event of a, of a drought, you'll get more projects done. But if you, you know, it's better to have the water. Uh, on Green Island Road, uh, I know. The estimates are pretty old and that we're trying to get some additional funding from, I think it was EDA. Uh, how is that effort going? Is that. Encouraging or, or, or not?
It is encouraging. I don't want to give, you know, false hope, but they are presenting our project at the Economic Development Administration tomorrow. Um, we're requesting five point five million dollars, which is a lot more than we did last time. Um, but they encouraged us to go after the grant again. So. Um, it looks good, but we won't know officially until the end of this month. I'm hoping they call and give us some good intermittent news that we could share, but right now, um. No news is good news, but they are presenting our project tomorrow.
Is that?
For review and.
Right. Is that the, on top of the two and a half million we got or is that in lieu of?
We spent some of, this is an addition, so we spent some of that material and timing, we did not get to use all of it, so had we turned back, they said, please reapply again. And um, we replied more because we applied for additional funding, knowing that inflation's happened and making sure that we're covered for the project. Um, but we're still. Quite a bit ahead as far as our match. Uh, they don't require a match, but we're still looking at about a forty-five percent match if we get the request that we've submitted.
Good, good. Yeah, that project, you know, that has been in a long, long time incoming and I know the business owners out there are. Anxiously awaiting and eh, and you're a newbie, so I, I won't be as cynical as normal, but we've heard the line. We'll get half done this year and the other next year. I've heard that about three or four times in my time on the council, so I hope you're the one who can deliver. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Now ready for uh council, uh, Mayor Council comments, committee reports, future agenda items.
We are, Mayor, thank you, Erica. We are, Mayor, thank you.
Alright, very good. Committee with uh reports, uh, take up future agenda items after. Uh, we have a Councilmember Mark Joseph, anything further to add to yours?
No, um, that's. I'm trying to get back into the swing of, of getting my reports in on time and. That's, that's my report.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Orl, anything further to add to yours?
Uh, no, I mean, I, I think, you know, my, my report's uh pretty full there, but I would like to say that I did, I too attended the American Canyon Job Fair. Um, but uh, unlike Maria's presentation, I actually included presentations in my, uh, pictures in my report for that one. It was there when the jobs are available, but I did see the city out there. I did love the little Wi-Fi thing. That you guys were doing, just capturing names and stuff like that. So it was actually a pretty cool event. Wasn't really looking for a job, I just wanted to see what was going on. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Washington, anything to report?
Yeah, I'm almost feeling like I'm in, it's baseball season must be not too far around. We're talking small ball, you got Mark talking swinging. Must be baseball season close. Um, I, I don't have my report, I didn't get it on time, but I kind of wanted to make sure this Thursday is a, a big day. A lot of things are happening. Uh, the Napa Valley Unified School District has their special meeting um dedicated to finalize um redistricting. Um, we have a trustee, um, listed to you to send out an email via the um Nextdoor app. Uh, with a, with um a survey in it, just to kind of get some input on three options. So I just asked people if you can, you know, get involved. You know, with the district, districting of our uh Napa Valley Unified School. Unfortunately, me and um. Uh, Councilmember Mark Joseph won't be able to attend that particular meeting. We, we had a meeting with them earlier. Uh, because we'll be uh meeting for climate change, uh, ad hoc meeting at same, at that same time, which is equally as important. Um. Also wanted just to make sure that we uh mention again Brenda Knights, how she mentioned, remember to mark your calendars with June nineteenth, uh Sunday for uh that celebration. One, you know, I hadn't heard anybody mention it today, but uh today's uh, uh, the Chinese uh New Year, so for our community, our Chinese uh members of the community. Just want to wish you a happy Chinese New Year. Um, I know there was an ask last week for Mark Beth, uh, uh, Beth Marcus. Regarding um retiring of USA flags. I have a meeting with the uh BFW next Monday. Uh, and it's on the agenda for us to talk about, so I'll have, I'll have uh more information for you, Beth, and for whoever else wants to be participant. Uh, participating in uh the ceremonial of retirement of US flags. Um, and other than that, I should have had the, my report in, I just didn't get it in, on, on, on time, so. That's my reports.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, may I interrupt really quick? Yeah, so.
Go ahead.
Um, Peter, thank you for bringing up Chinese New Year. Uh, Gong Xi Fat Chai is what you say. Gong He Fat Cho is another way of saying. Shidian Quaila is what you said. So if you guys don't know, um, I spent some time in China. I know like fifteen ways to say it. Happy Lunar New Year. Um, but you saw me eating and clothes. I was.
Um, but you saw me eating in clothes. I was having dinner. We had dinner. I, I usually eat dinner right before this clothes beating. I was eating lucky dumplings this evening. My, my family made fresh dumplings. So my kids were there making dumplings. It's a sign of good luck and prosperity. I also had a little orange and we handed out red envelopes. Uh, watch Taiwanese Chinese. So thank you for recognizing that. And she's telling me, oh, you should say something to City Council about it. Totally forgot. My, my father-in-law's Chinese, so um, we, we had the same type of thing that you were just mentioning there. I just can't say it like as. Say Happy New Year, sir. Happy New Year. There you go.
All right, we'll do one there all without us.
Mr. Mayor, so I, um, due to the COVID spike, I've been avoiding all large gatherings, whether they're indoor or outdoor. So I didn't go to the job fair, even though it was in my calendar. Um, but I really appreciated Councilmember Oro's pictures in his report. That being said, I did go to the same California League of Cities meeting that Councilmember Oro wrote all about. So all of the information is there. Um, also, I wanted to take a moment to give a shout out to all city staff because I think we have an amazing staff and the employee recognition event that we hosted just showed us like how lucky we are because the amount of people that we had that have been here for five or more years is impressive. And I think that goes with what Maria was saying earlier is it shows how great of a place American Canyon is to work. Um, and we just, when staff was talking today, I was like, oh my gosh, there's so much happening and so many moving parks. What an amazing staff we have. So thank you guys so much for everything that you do for all of us. And that's it for my report.
Thanks for that. I really, you know, I think we all appreciate that from the heart. I think we all feel the and uh, appreciate the work everybody does. Appreciate you embracing that to see. Uh, well, job fair, I was there too. Wow. It's just, uh, remember, if any of us remember, I meet me in the street that Valerie, uh, Seize Rice puts together for the kind of had that feeling, you know, it was just uh, uh, really thank the Dolby Lumber for uh, giving us you know, so they could arrange that. But you know, city staff were there with their table and everybody is just having a conversation or something and out. Uh, um, a lot of people that very well attended and uh, I'm very happy about that. And some of the uh, some at least two uh, trades are doing some uh, um, information on uh, recruitment, trying to get people more into the work system. I think when we're, uh, so follow the uh, economic and uh, uh, news out there in terms of impact, you know, we're experiencing a, a bit of an inflation going on now. We didn't have before. But also there's a, the whole job market seems to be changing around. Uh, had another conversation today, uh, we are all going to go in, in person or we're going to go virtual, stay virtual or we're going to do hybrid? It means the fact of the matter is what we have now is going to be, Bob is going to remain permanent with us for the foreseeable future. It seems to see that uh, where the impact is with it. Can't find enough truck drivers to deliver goods, so the cost of goods on the shelf go up. Uh, can't get enough people to unload ships at the port, so it affects a little supply chain. Uh, people are, uh, job fair is great at recruiting people who want to change employment or get into employment uh, with a new job. Uh, so it's a cycle of change right now that I find uh, uh, in one way very energizing, in another way kind of, well, okay, where's this thing going to reach a new level point here? So your life is a little more certain. There's a lot of economics is based on certainty. Uh, that was good. To Vice President Adamus' compliment of staff, I really like to compliment the, the work that staff have done on Wetlands Edge. I mean, it's greatly improved to have all this wood shipped down, the dead, a lot of the dead bushes cleared out of there. And it needs some ongoing attention too. I know there's a, there's been an issue, it's a complaint I received about the berries uh, dropping on the sidewalk. I talked with Mr. Holly about that and maybe that's the next piece of work we can take up on it, but it, it just looks great. You know, I'll drive by and they're moving the woodchips around. I just say hi, thank you. You know, just a little word of appreciation will go by. Yeah, the North Bay Division, uh, League of California Cities, I know Vice President Adamus is uh, one of the second vice presidents, right? And uh, we had a very good meeting that day with uh, I think well-attended from all the, all our four counties that participate in that. Uh, really appreciate our activity, everybody, and taking the time for the uh, strategic planning, the retreat that we had together. I think it was a very productive conversation all the way around. Oh, uh, speaking of American Canyon Community and Parks Foundation, Councilmember Oro, you got a great picture in the paper with the, with the crew there, uh, for the hearts.
Oh, I did? I gotta, I gotta go look.
Well, I'll probably take a snapshot. It'd be easiest way and I could send it to you. That being said, that would conclude my oral report. I would just say uh, likewise as raised by uh, Councilmembers Oro and Washington. Uh, I'd like to close my remarks with uh, well, recognizing the Lunar New Year. As they say, Gong Hei Fat Choi. Um, don't know there's many dialects as uh, Councilmember Oro, but also know some of the Vietnamese family, next door to me. Chak mon, uh, chak long. Nam moi, chak long nam moi. That's, that's happy New Year in Vietnamese. And we got nice, we share, got food going all over the court around there. So got a nice big roll of Vietnamese celebratory food to enjoy when I get home. Which means, oh, it's probably still early, so everybody's up. Anyway, uh, chak long nam moi. Um, uh, Gong Hei Fat Choi. Happy Lunar New Year. Uh, that, we concluded our business. Oh, future geniuses. Anything? Nope. And we concluded our business this evening. Thank you all very much.
Good night in American Canyon.
Night. Thanks.